Okay, and welcome back. Council's recess for our meeting is over. This is the second half of the May 21st meeting. I guess we'll call this Council Evening Edition. We will start our agenda in the middle with delegation portion if there was anybody here who wished to speak to a matter other than something that was a public hearing. If you're here, I see there are some folks in the crowd. If you're here to speak to the public hearing, there'll be an opportunity to do that. But this is an opportunity if there was anybody here that wished to speak to any matter that wasn't a subject of a public hearing. We're trying out a new system with our council meetings with half in the afternoon, half in the early evening, and we wanted to make sure that if there was anybody from the public who couldn't attend during working hours, that they still had this opportunity to come and bring an issue forward to council. It doesn't look like there's anybody here. Most likely that they're here for the public hearing, and so we'll close this delegation portion of our agenda and move on to item 14.1, which is the Public Hearing for the Kensington Area Structure Plan Amendment and Kensington Outline Plan Amendment Bylaws. I would call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction. Mr. Walton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, as you mentioned, amendments to the Kensington Area Structure Plan and Kensington Outline Plan. In March of this year, the Infrastructure Protective Services Committee directed administration to bring forward amendments to the Kensington ASP and OP to designate the community park that was planned for that area as a school site. The Kensington area is located west of 116th Street, south of the train tracks and north of 76th Avenue. The area is primarily designated as a residential area. There's a commercial node in the northwest corner, and the rest of it is generally commercial, or sorry, residential. There's a mix of single-family and some slightly higher-density residential within the neighborhood. And as this map shows, there's a central community park. When the Area Structure Plan and Outline Plan were adopted, at that time, we circulated these amendments or these plans to the school boards. They indicated at that time that there was no need for a school on this site, and so a central community park was planned instead. Subsequent to that, we did receive an Area Structure Plan Amendment for the area that's shown in gray on this map on your screens. As a result of that, which was intended to be primarily residential, the Public School Board identified a need for a school site in this larger area, and that's why the Infrastructure Protective Services Committee directed us to make a change to the Area Structure Plan and Outline Plan. The community park that's in the neighborhood is approximately 4.6 hectares in size, which is large enough to accommodate a school site. So there's no issue basically that the site is undersized for placing a K-8 school there. The proposed amendments align with council's strategic plan. The school site is located, I shall go back, whoops, I'll go back to this. The school site is located on the intersection of two collector roads, which is fairly ideal for placement of a school. It also allows, during the design of the school site, to separate the bus loop from the parent drop-off loop and the teacher parking, which is kind of the ideal orientation basically for safety of students who are walking to and from the school. In your reports, I've identified the current and proposed ASP alignments. Essentially, it's just a little bit of graphics change within a couple of the maps on both the ASP and the OP that identifies this as a school site. In addition, there are minor text changes to both plans, again, you know, changing the references to community park to school site in both the ASP and the OP. Our engineering department has identified that there's sufficient water and sewer capacity in the neighborhood basically to accommodate a school. Typically, schools have a high water design capacity for firefighting, and there is sufficient capacity basically of both water and wastewater in the neighborhood. The area is designated public service. When the Outline Plan was adopted, the site was given a public service designation. That is the same designation that we would apply to a school site, and therefore, there's no need to amend the Area Structure Plan. And we did circulate the proposal to the landowner and the adjacent property owners. We also advertised it in the newspaper in accordance with the requirements of the Act. We did receive one letter or email from the consultant for the landowner indicating that they were in support of the amendment to essentially turn this community park into a school site. So in summary, the future population growth in this corner of the city will require a school site, and therefore, we are recommending the council approve the amendments to both the Area Structure Plan and the Outline Plan to accommodate this future demand. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Walton. Are there any questions for administration at this stage before we open to presentation submissions? Any questions from council? Not seeing any? Then we'll open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. This would be the opportunity for anyone who wished to speak to the proposed changes to come forward. If there was anybody that wanted to come and speak and share their opinion about the proposed changes, now would be the time to do that. And I will just call one last time while people are thinking about it. There won't be another opportunity if you did want to say, share an opinion, and we don't bite, so we're more than happy to have you come up and share your perspective if you wanted to, appreciate the fact that you made your way here this evening. Come on up and join us. Good evening. All we ask you to do is have a seat, by all means, be comfortable. If you could just both introduce yourselves so that we can get you for the minutes.
Bill Rioman, Wanda Gerard.
Where the jointed landowners.
Okay, sure.
Don't have any question about the school, but just if you could go back to the map.
Sure. Mr. Walton, can you put the map back up on site?
Yeah, so where they have the pond on the top left-hand corner on the west side. You show a road going through there, is that correct?
Maybe you can show the one that has the collectors and arterials, Mr. Walton. There you go. That's the one I was thinking of. So I think this shows the roads that are intended to go through.
That road would be on the south side of that pond, on the left-hand, on the west side, right?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Am I reading that right?
That's what I would see on the plan. That's how I'd interpret it, too. Yes?
Okay, so when we had our survey done, our land goes past, it would be on the north, just about in the middle of that pond. Pond is to the east of our property, right?
Okay. Sorry, and I'll just, just so that I understand, are you to the west of the railway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, east.
We're that little tiny triangular sliver that's right next to the rain spot for the Japeter Swans.
Sure, absolutely.
When they did the survey, they said that it was like half a mile from the south to the north. When they put the pond there, that was right on the east, northeast corner of that, right? So if they're on the west, rather than south side of the pond, how much of our land are they gonna go through?
Sure. So appreciate exactly what you're asking, and I'm not certain if we can answer that at this time because...
Unless I'm wrong on the property, don't go that far, but I think it does.
Yeah, it's possible. Absolutely, it looks like it does maybe from the map. But at this stage, the, I guess in terms of city planning, this is conceptual, and it would be up to anybody that wished to develop that road to work with you to seek road right-of-way or approval to do that, and you'd have full ability to do negotiation direct with the developer in that case as a property owner. So there is some level, the city's role is to ensure that all the lines make sense and that they would match up. It's somebody else's responsibility, the developers typically, who have the responsibility of negotiating with their adjacent landowners to make things actually, to actually construct things.
It's very wide, I mean, it's skinny, but I just thought...
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate the concern when you see lines going over top of your land that you own. It's natural to have concerns about that, but at this stage, the city isn't going to require you to do anything with your land. It's basically showing how would these roads match up in the future, and if anybody wanted to develop yourself or your adjacent neighbors, it would be up to you to work together to figure out what sort of arrangements you would come to. Is that a fair description?
That's good, yeah.
Is that okay?
Yep, that's good, yeah.
I have a question and a comment. First of all, the intersection at what's shown there is 76th Avenue and 116th Street. At what point in time will lights be introduced at that intersection? Currently, it's very difficult to exit onto 116th Street from 76th Avenue, and with the school being in that subdivision, I would assume that that's going to increase the traffic there. I'd rather see the lights installed before the school is open, and I'm just wondering if there's any consideration given to that.
Sure. So I don't have any information, and I'm looking at Mr. Walton, who's in our planning department. He's one of the guys that makes sure all the lines match up. And then there's an entirely other team that, our engineering team, that would assess the volumes of traffic and when lights would be needed. And so, Mr. Walton, do you have any, do you have any information from engineering or any perspective from engineering?
Through the mayor, or Mr. Mayor, I guess what I will share is that, a couple of things. One is, I'm certainly aware that our engineering department identifies the need for traffic lights based on traffic volumes. With respect to the school or a traffic lights going in before a school, obviously, this area is just starting to develop. The idea of this area structure plan and the outline plan is to, you know, is to identify an area where a school will eventually go. A school won't be built here until there's sufficient population within this neighborhood to actually warrant it, which I would expect would be, you know, quite a few years away. And again, the, I guess, traffic on 116th and 76th Avenue, I sort of, I use that intersection quite a bit. My expectation is that our engineering department would identify that when they identify a need for it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Additionally, I suppose we could ensure that we found your contact information, and since we don't have our engineering folks in the room, we could just check to make sure if there are any additional details. It's possible that based on current volumes, there's a need for it. I don't know that right now, but we could find out where that intersection sits in terms of the priority right now. It wouldn't be a surprise to me if it, traffic volumes meant that there was lights there before a school, but I don't know that for a fact. But we'd be happy to follow up with you to find out where it sits, sort of in the, is it number one or number 10 on the list today? We could follow up with you if you'd like us to do that. Okay? Okay. Were there any other questions that you had, any other perspective?
Just my last comment would be to say thank you for setting aside property for schools in the future that will help our youth continue to have schools within their, the areas that they live. I think that's so important, so.
Thank you. Thanks very much. If you'll just maybe make sure that, sorry, just as you leave, if you'd just maybe make sure that you gave your contact information to Mr. Walton so that we could follow up on the engineering question about the traffic lights, right? Thanks very much for being here this evening. Was there anybody else that wished to make presentation with respect to these proposed changes to the Kensington area, Area Structure Plan and Outline Plan? I don't see anybody else coming forward. Council, were there any other questions for administration at this stage? I don't see any council members waving furiously to get into the queue, and so that being the case, then I will close the public hearing and we'll move on to business arising. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move the council give first readings by law, C. 1343A, being amendments to the Kensington Area Structure Plan.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. There's no discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. That motion carries. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move the council give second readings by law, C. 1343A.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Motion for second reading. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Sorry, I should have asked this earlier before we, but I just had a question for administration. If I'm looking at this properly, we'd have four neighborhood parks plus the school site in this location. I'm just wondering if the neighborhood parks were supposed to be fully arc-structured, built out, when it's all, when it's all built out, or if those would just be dedicated green spaces and the park structure can be decided later on?
Mr. Walton?
Through the mayor, I don't know the specifics of the Parks Design Report. Typically, neighborhood parks do have a place structure. It's part of what, I guess, we request that the developer provide when, you know, when he's servicing the neighborhood. I don't know the specifics, but my expectation is that each one of these would have some form of place structure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Walton. And on that point, Mr. Walton, would it actually be the city's sort of arc standard that would drive that? And so if that standard changed before this neighborhood was developed, that new standard would apply to it?
Through the mayor, yeah. The, I mean, the city has these park improvement standards as part of our engineering guidelines, and when the, I guess, the standards that are, the standards that exist when the developer's doing the improvements to the neighborhood, when he signs the agreement, those would be the standards that would apply.
Okay, thanks very much. I don't see anybody else in the queue, and we're still on second reading. Any other discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you. I'd move the council have third reading of bylaw, C. 1343A, at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. So this is a motion to have third and final reading here this evening. In order for us to move on to third and final reading, this motion must pass unanimously. If it doesn't, then that third reading formality would come back at the next council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, so we can have third and final reading. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move the council give third readings by law, C. 1343A, being an amendment to the Kensington Area Structure Plan.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. One more opportunity for discussion or debate on the Area Structure Plan. If there's something you forgot, you could bring it up on the Outline Plan Amendment. I don't see anybody ringing in, that's why we'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and can we move on to the Outline Plan Amendment? Your microphone's on, Counselor Bressi might as well.
Great. I would move that council give first readings by law, C. 1344A, being an amendment to the Kensington Outline Plan.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Any discussion, sorry, no discussion or debate on first reading? Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move that council give second readings by law, C. 1344A.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Any discussion or debate on second reading of 1344A? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you. I'd move the council have third reading of bylaw, C. 1344A, at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. That's a motion for, to have third and final reading. I won't repeat the whole spiel since I just did it a half a minute ago. Is there any discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. We can have third and final reading. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move the council give third reading to bylaw, C. 1344A, being an amendment to the Kensington Outline Plan.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. One last opportunity, third and final reading, Outline Plan. Going once, going, okay. I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And after amending those two different plans that both apply to this area, we've dealt with all the business related to the Kensington Area Outline Plan and Area Structure Plan, and that handles all of our public hearing business. Thanks very much to both of you who were here in attendance this evening to ask your questions, and we'll make sure to follow up from our engineering department. We had no delegations in this evening portion of our agenda, and so that will take us to council member reports. I didn't ask ahead of time council members who had reports, and so if you just want to, I'll make eye contact with everybody, and if anybody nods their head up and down, then I'll take that as a sign that you have a report from an external agency board or commission. I see Counselor O'Toole has a report. Excellent, thanks, thanks, Counselor O'Toole.
Mayor Given, I met with the deputy or assistant Commander of Sports Commission member, and we looked at the venue for the event happening in June. It'll be inside this year, it'll be in the Bowes family side instead of having it outside. It makes it, we've got certain commitments that we need to make sure as a commission for security and safety, and we couldn't fulfill those obligations in the outside of the premises, but we can do so on the inside, so, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any other reports from external agencies before we move on to council member roundtable? I will just report briefly on AUMA, since it's actually on our list. Last week, I attended a chaired meeting of the AUMA Police Act Working Group. The working group is continuing in absence of any other direction from the new provincial government about the police act review. I think all parties recognize that the act still needs significant updating. The committee has chosen to change its timeline slightly and to move forward the focus on the funding formula, and so the, over the next couple of meetings, the working group will work on establishing a proposal for a new funding formula for policing in the province, which has obviously been a long priority for the city of Grand Prairie. So I was happy to attend that meeting last Friday, and I think that's all of my AUMA business for this week that I wanted to provide an update to council on. Also, this actually, I guess, is under AUMA, sorry, I'm also the AUMA representative on the Alert Civilian Advisory Committee. That committee met for the first time last week in Banff. The committee nominated me to be the chair of the committee, and our committee of public members appointees from AUMA, RMA, and the Alberta Association of Police Governance had a joint meeting with the Board of Directors of Alert, which is the chiefs of police of Alberta's municipal forces, and the deputy commissioner of the RCMP. So it was a great opportunity to meet with the new board, and we're going to be working over the next little while to establish some new processes for how this civilian advisory committee, which never existed before, communicates with the Board of Directors of the Alert Organization to ensure that Alberta's, Albertans' priorities for policing are reflected in the work of Alert. And I would just note that today, there was an announcement of a seizure of guns in Grand Prairie, which was a great reminder that from top to bottom in our province, Alert is doing good work, and I'm happy to be able to represent AUMA there on that civilian advisory committee and support the work of Alert. Those were my two reports under AUMA, and we'll move to council member roundtable, and we'll start with Counselor Thieson.
I started a timer for myself, just so you guys know. I had a pretty busy couple of weeks. It's nice, on May 7th and 9th, I went to the fifth biennial Alberta Criminal Justice Symposium in Edmonton. It was, it came, it came as advertised largely to do with criminal justice system, but there are other points in there that I thought I could apply to my municipal earnings. Unfortunately, outside of like finding housing for First Nations people and how best to get them to not fall back into recidivism, that was the only real earnings that I could take away from that besides my other work with the John Howard Society, but it was still a worthwhile cause, and I made some great contacts in and around there, so it was really great. I also was able to give greetings at a very intimate gathering at the Legion for Veterans' Appreciation Day. I make note of that because although there was only probably about 24 people in attendance, and I was council representative, and I gave greetings, it's still always a great time to get together with our veterans and to praise them and to appreciate their battles as far as making our country a free and safe place, a one that lives and breathes democracy instead of some other tyranny, so it was always good to do that. And a bonus was, former MLA Wayne Drysdale was asked to speak at that event, so even though I've heard him say on two separate occasions that this was his last speaking event, I actually got to see him at his last speaking event in the capacity or uncapacity of being an MLA. So always a treat, always a pleasure to see Mr. Drysdale. I can't wait to see him again as he works through nautical. Finally, on May 16th, I had the opportunity to sit for a few hours at the petroleum show on behalf of the community opioid task force at the booth there. I had lots of great conversations with about 40 different people and had about six people sign up for, for naloxone training, sorry, I lost the word there, so that was really great. One of those was a local business owner that said that he wanted to get all of his staff in his fast food restaurant trained up, so that was 10 to 12, so that one sign up, I think, is worth at least 13 or 14, so always good. And there was lots of praise coming from the community. Not one member came up to us and said, "This is a horrible thing that you're doing. I can't believe you're helping those people that are in that situation in their life." Everyone was very supportive of the work that the task force has done and that we continue to do, so I was proud to represent on that behalf, and that is my report at 2 minutes and 20 seconds.
Great job, Counselor Thieson. Let's see if we can beat that record next time. Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I had you pegged for four minutes, so I was late. I thought you were four minutes late, five minutes, but... I guess, fairly busy last two weeks, but my highlight was a meeting that Jan Shields had called for some planning for the South East Archives, intimate meeting just in her home with Tina and Dennis Dale and Helen Rice as well, just to talk about a future home for South East Archives. I think we've had, this council's probably aware that they're looking for a new home at some point, so it was just, it was fun to be part of a big picture planning strategic, you know, where it could be home, and it will be coming to community living at some point, so we'll be having a council conversation, hopefully in the future, but it was just nice to hear a group of people really trying to push the ball forward that are all board members, committee members. This wasn't staff-driven, this was 100% community-driven, so I was excited about that. And it was interesting having it, realizing there's some good synergies potentially with truth and reconciliation, so I really thought that was an interesting play on, you know, if we could get a new facility for him, we might be able to have that included with it. So, yeah, that was, that was my report.
Thanks very much, Counselor Plott. Counselor Thieson.
Thank you. I was able to give greetings on behalf of the city at the Nurses Banqueta for Nurses' Appreciation Week, and that always means a lot to me because, of course, that's my background, and I certainly credit the richness of opportunities available to nurses in Alberta with bringing me to where I'm at in life right now. And I was also able to do my very first flag raising, so after I figured out how to do it, we did get that big, beautiful, bold rainbow flag up again, near and dear to my heart. The Gay and Lesbian Association of the Peace has been an important part of education and helping Grand Prairie residents and the area really understand why we need to have things like International Day Against Homophobia, Biphobia, and Transphobia, and the Pride Festival as well. It is a separate organization, but, but it has been, Gallup has been in Grand Prairie a number of years, so I was delighted to do that. And then attended also the Gallup's event that evening, and Petey the Dog in his rainbow bandana was the absolute hero of the evening, so we had a great time. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Counselor Minhas.
Mayor Well Given, I didn't go to many things this last two weeks, but I did go to Forest Economic Committee meetings, which was a very good one, and can for representative and the war houser. International paper was missing, and so is Norwood, but there was good discussion on it because the forestry is the main hub for our northern Alberta and Grand Bay area to be economically benefiting, which is the four main hubs for us, like agriculture, forestry, and oil and gas, and then Grand Bay's main hub for the northern Alberta and BC to supply the things. It was a very good discussion, and the foresters, the can for and warehouses have a concern about the carbo cutbacks and hoping that's solved with the federal government soon. It was a good meeting and lots of learning for me and other people that were there, and we were about, I think, 12 people there. And the second thing, I went to Don Kenji, his retirement event in the evening. That was pretty good, you know, meeting, greeting, have supper in the evening, and then karaoke ran till about 11:30. I did good, but I couldn't, I couldn't drink, so that was all right. So that's all I have done, otherwise I was a little bit sick before that.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhas. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that haven't been brought up yet. Had the opportunity to volunteer at Mighty Peace Day, helping corral buses so that the youth came off the bus safe and that there was enough space to park all of the buses. It was a pretty uneventful event for me, but as I stepped inside to finish my shift, you could feel the energy inside, and it, once again, was a great event, so I truly want to send a big thank you out to all the organizers and volunteers that made another successful Mighty Peace Day. I presented trees on, for Arbor Day at St. Catherine's School to grade one classes, as most people do. It was another year of great questions on how to plant trees, and the forester I was with was very, very engaged and really taught the children excellent ways to make the trees be successful. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that I attended with fellow Mayor Given, Counselor O'Toole, and Counselor, I think Counselor Plott was there, I apologize if you weren't, attended, the attended... I apologize if you weren't. Tended the, attended, uh, the elected officials recreation training, uh, which was an opportunity for, um, the different councils that sit on the regional recreation committee from around the region to talk about, uh, opportunities, uh, in regards to programming and, and ways that we can collaborate, uh, through provincial and federal programming opportunities. Um, I was happy to see that, uh, um, everybody that, from our recreation committee pretty much was there. Counselor Bressi, I know how to another engagement, but it, uh, it was a, it was a long day, but it was a very useful day. And so I was hap- happy to be able to attend that. That's my report. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor O'Toole?
So I as well attended Mighty Peace Day. Uh, that evening, I also attended the Real Shorts Film Festival, what's been going on for a number of years. And to be honest with you, I don't think I would have ever, uh, ever attended, but being on council, we had an invitation a few years back to go, and I haven't missed, uh, Real Shorts Film Festival since. It's, uh, unique, it's experience. Uh, some films are something that you don't want to watch again, and others you wish there was more of them like that. So, uh, that's the unique thing about going to this festival. I also, uh, took, uh, retiring superintendent Don McKenna out for lunch. Uh, on, uh, on the eighth, we talked about his career in Grand Prairie and his thirty-year career with the RCMP. And, uh, it was a great, great social event. Uh, what else did we do? Uh, Pellet of Care, I, uh, I, I said words on behalf of Mayor Given at the Second Annual Pellet of Care Conference here at the Palmeroy. Uh, just soon I thought I was gonna get started, Mayor Given shows up, but, uh, he had another meeting to go to, so it was a splash and dash. But, uh, they much appreciated him making an appearance. And the same thing with the Arbor Day Tree Celebration. I was at Roy Pickle's school for that. And, uh, it was interesting to see the uniqueness of the little kids asking questions about the trees and what type they were, and, uh, and, uh, I also was told that, uh, fire hazard is high in the Grand Prairie area. So just because we got rain and snow late, doesn't mean anything. It's still, and you can see out in the area that it is very dry. And with that, I will, uh, I'll leave that. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Bressi?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. I was sitting next to Counselor O'Toole at Real Shorts, and I'm curious what category he put in the film, My Ex Girlfriend is a Shovel. Uh, I, another highlight for me was my favorite part of this job is going to grade six classes to talk about the city, and I got to do that at Riverstone School with Counselor O'Toole. So two of the highlights of my last week were with Counselor O'Toole. Uh, uh, another, another one for me was I got asked by Technical Search and Rescue to go and learn a little bit more of what they're doing and tour their facility, tour their shop, and it was very interesting to see their equipment. It was really interesting to hear how much they've grown in the last three years in terms of they've quadrupled their, their membership in terms of people that are ready to go out on calls. Also, something they just started a few years ago was going into classrooms to give kids education on wilderness survival in terms of hug a tree and survive if you get lost in the forest, and those other things that they might need to know just to survive till rescue comes. And started that a couple of years ago, and now they're, they've taught about thirteen hundred kids this year alone. And so it's a good organization that's doing some good things. I also learned more about the evidence searches they do for RCMP and some of the missing kids searches they do. So I didn't really quite understand the scope of what they do, and it was good to hear. They've invited all of council. If anybody else wants to tour, they'd love to show more year-round, so it was an interesting time. I thought I'd be there for half an hour. I was there for two hours, and then I had to drag myself out. It was really interesting. And those are my reports.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Um, I think council members have reported on a number of items that I was also at, and so thanks, council members, for, uh, doing that. And for some that I wasn't, where council members were able to bring, uh, greetings on behalf of, of council. I appreciate, uh, many of you doing that, as I have more provincial commitments over the last little while. Certainly appreciate council members stepping up to do that, and, uh, I think all those recognitions are really important acts in our community, and I appreciate the fact that we're able to cover it as a team. Um, I, uh, also, uh, attended a conference call, um, for the Alberta Municipal Services Corporation Board of Governors. The city of Grand Prairie uses a number of services through the AMSC, uh, which is the business arm of AUMA. Uh, we talked about the AMSC's, uh, recent reduction in insurance rates. Uh, so the city of Grand Prairie was a beneficiary of that, uh, to, uh, a number that was not insignificant. Um, and so it was great to sort of see the inner workings of that organization that provides insurance services, benefit services, and many others to the city of Grand Prairie and our community. Um, and I also, uh, had the, uh, pleasure and honor of attending at the finale of Grand Prairie's Smartest Person. Spoil alert, I am not Grand Prairie's smartest person, um, but I was really, uh, really enjoyed the evening out and the opportunity to go there. And I have to say, we have some very, very smart people in Grand Prairie. Um, and everybody that participated helped raise money for the Imagination Library. Um, the, uh, program of the After Five, uh, Wednesday After Five Rotary Club. And, uh, it was great to see that they had such a great turnout, were able to raise funds, to be able to get books in the hands of preschool-aged children all across our community at no charge. Um, and with that, I think we will call our half, our evening edition of our council meeting adjourned. We'll see you next time.